For Center for the Arts in R two District, seventy-two Main Street. And it's for signed, signed boards for the Carter Giant. We don't have anything complaining. We might have gotten something from them.
Whether it should be counted.
Let me see it.
You want to see the papers?
Ah, yes. Okay. We do have it. And we do have that. Um. We're. If we approve this, site plan tonight, um, we will also be required to, Center for the Arts to go to the ZBA for a variance for the sign. And we, we, uh, code requirements. But we're just looking at, uh, we have to site plan replacement. So, for, don't know if anybody is. We don't have anybody from, I think so. Center for the Arts. Does, any of the board members have any comments?
Well, with the site plan, sure, the zoning boys been in it. They have to deal with it because it's more square feet than allowed by the code. As as part of the site plan review, what, what, it's a structure and I couldn't, I don't know what we're actually evaluating. It's not, is it like it would be setbacks would be adequate from, is it like any other building?
Right, yeah, we're looking at basically setbacks and, uh.
No. Is there anything else?
Not really. Or what, what they plan to do, um. I think the, uh, from what I've seen, the ultimate goal is, you know, yeah, the explanation of what the Carter Giant is all about and also to shield from view, the, from public view, the condensers or the air conditioners. And this looks like it does, would do a good job of that.
So, yeah, the site plan reviews, look at, at drainage, what's not an issue here?
Right, there's, there's really.
Nothing was setback.
Right, it, it falls within the setback requirements.
Not too tall?
No, no. So they're gonna be, uh, you know. Four feet above grade?
No, it's not even that.
Six, top of it, it's six feet above. The panels are twenty-four right there. It's, it's about a six by ten.
Ten, yeah, ten by six feet tall.
And then, I guess in the, the overall, uh, way of describing physical size for, for zoning, not that we're gonna have to deal with it, but it would be, they're thirty-two inch high by ten feet. So that's less, that's less than thirty square feet, actually.
It's like eight times larger than allowed by the code.
Yeah, and then there, and the code has several other interpretations, but we don't really have to get involved with that. That's since the DBA's got to look at that. So we're looking at, we're just basically replacement, the, uh, I did find a couple of one error in the short assessment form that was given to us by, Center for the Arts. And that's on the third page of it. They've got it dated December ninth twenty-three. If you will have that, that last short page, it should be twenty-two. So we should make it know that.
It's, uh, setback, uh, well, the giant already, it's, it's setback seven feet from the sidewalk, this is even further back, yes. When you come before us for the giant, it, the day?
No.
It disappeared one day.
Uh, kind of like up in Carter, it just appeared. Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, this, I believe, will be a.
The size of this thing is really for zoning.
Size, placement, placement, and the fact that it's very, uh, this, depending on your interpretation of the zoning law, uh, whether more than one sign is allowed on the site. And whether the, that we consider the whole, the whole project. There are several, there were more than, at least two building lots involved. That's, the DBA will take care of that.
Okay.
As a type two action, I'd ask for a motion that the planning board, the lead, lead agency for the seeker for this particular, some of that. Mike moves.
I second.
Yeah, is it a secretary?
No, it's all recorded.
All recorded, so, fair, all a second. Clear denunciation would be most appreciated. Clear direct voice and everything else. Speak out.
Speak up.
I'm not speaking up, I'm talking down to the table.
I know, project a little bit, it'll be great.
All right.
You're a lovely voice, Don, very nice to meet you.
That's debatable, but, okay, Mike moves and Paul a second, a planning board, the lead agency for seeker, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Period. Okay, we're going through the, uh, short form impact statement. I don't know if any, if I've already asked copies of one. I've got a couple extra copies, but we're gonna, when you wanna follow along, we're gonna, we're gonna need some back at the end, we're gonna do one for each item. The, the questions would be either answered either no or small impact or moderate to large impact. Question number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan zoning regulations, planner zoning regulations? No impact or moderate to large. No small?
No impact.
No impacts? Everybody agree? Okay. Uh, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of the land? No or small?
Yeah, yeah.
By the way, where are you reading? I have the sheet in front of me with part one.
That's, the, we're looking at part two. I've got a part two.
Oh, that's amazing, you can just read that off.
Yeah, I, I, I gave everyone you laminated copy one time. Okay. Uh, number three, will a proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No? Okay. Will a proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affecting existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway?
No.
Will a proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will a proposed action impact existing public, private water supplies?
No.
No?
No.
Public or private water wastement, water wastewater treatment? Will a proposed action impair the characteristic or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources?
No.
No.
No. Will a proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater?
No.
And will a proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problem?
No.
Will a proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
Okay, uh, I would entertain a motion to for a negative declaration of environmental impact. Paul?
Uh.
Move.
I'll second.
Jessica second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Sign. Okay. Center for the Arts is. Second on the agenda was, Mark Gaddard's app, application. And we've been asked to hold that until he gets here a little later.
Don, I don't mean to interrupt you, but the actual, um, application for the site plan approval, I don't know if you guys wanted to consider it at this meeting and perhaps make a contingent on, on the ZBA's granting of a variance for the sign?
Um, we can do that. Do you wanna make a approval contingent on?
Yes.
Paul, make a motion to approve contingent on, on ZBA. And second? Actually. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry it. Okay. So, as I said, we're, we have, uh, this second one was for Gaddard's. We're gonna hold on that one until later. Uh, the next one coming up is for Brenda Lilly, site plan review for a one-chair salon as a customary home occupation. A single-tiered salon in R two District at ten Kings Street. Is there anybody here? Yes, Bren?
Yes, I'm Brenda.
I'm Brenda Shane.
Okay. Brenda and Shane are here, uh. Would, do you have any comments you'd like to make regarding your application? What are you planning to do?
Well, the plan is, is, uh, converting our master bedroom into the first one, which has got a sing, uh, its own entrance and its own bathroom. And we're just gonna put a single chair in there with plumbing and a sink. So she can, it would just be her in there. Uh, room is about thirteen by thirteen. And the bathroom, like I said, is, uh, big enough for a walk up or coming to get in through the door. It's a sliding door. And, uh, that's our plan. The entrance is basically, it started out as an entrance, as a garage. We built a mudroom and then a foyer. There's about a five and a half inch step from the mudroom into the foyer, so it'll have its own entrance. We're going to put a door on the kitchen, which has got three steps to get into, that'll block the rest of the house off from the salon.
And we have a letter from the county planning. And that they have no comments. We, 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 they're returning it without taking it to county plan. This is the planning department. So. Anybody on the board got questions for the act?
It's just about parking, so, you know, it's double wide. Just describe the situation when, um, one, one person that comes in the car and it's in the salon and another person, next appointment is coming, so now you have two cars, right?
Right.
It's a complex car.
And they, I don't, they all can get out of the.
Comfortably.
There is, um, um, street parking, but if it's different, I don't double, triple book. I have, I own a salon now, but that's getting very costly, so this is on everybody going to this, but, yes, which four car, is four car wide, I mean.
Two car wide, four car being, or two.
Just, yeah, like if you come in, get your hair done before, you know, they're done before the next one comes in, so it shouldn't be a problem.
And like I say, the way that her car could be parked, it would be the further parking lot from the door. So, I mean, I leave at six-thirty in the morning, so the car, the, the parking lot's empty for the most part until, you know, she has people come in and out. There's no stuff or anything to get into the main entrance, other than the stuff to go from the mudroom into the foyer.
Okay, that, uh, for handicap accessibility, that you'll have to make arrangements for that, then?
Yes.
The longer you, it feels.
Right, right now, I'm getting to the salon that I have, um, we put handles on the door and that seems to work out there well.
Okay.
We went inside and outside, so you can just grab it to miss stuff up.
Well, you, uh, you'll have a visit probably from Kevin McMahon to tell you if you have to make any changes.
Okay.
And, uh, just a comment you have on your page two of the environmental assessment form that you filled out. I, I see an error, number nine. Does a proposed action near exceed the state energy code requirements? And you've got yes, and it really should be no. You don't, you don't exceed, you're just doing what you've been doing all along, so.
Okay.
Uh, that needs to be changed. I'll change it on the original here.
Okay.
And, uh, do, anybody else have any questions? Any comments? This is also a type two action. Was, uh, someone make a motion to, for the planning board to be the lead agency for seeker? Paul?
I'll second.
Add to the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Carry it. Okay, then, then we'll go through the ritual again. No or small impact or moderate to large? If I don't remember, I'll leave by the time we get done.
No.
It's because, it's because I'm a little bit over the point. Um, will a proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation?
No.
No.
No. Will a proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the used land?
No.
No.
Will a proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
No.
Will a proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of critical environmental area?
No.
Will a proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway?
No.
No.
Will a proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
No.
Will a proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? Public or private wastewater treatment facilities?
No.
Will a proposed action impair the characteristic or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources?
No.
No.
Will a proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater?
No.
No. Will a proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems?
No.
No.
Will a proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
Okay, I make a, I'll entertain a motion for a negative declaration. For Jessica?
Second.
And Mike? Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
And I'll now entertain a motion to approve the site plan review as submitted.
How would you do that?
Mike?
I'll second.
Paul a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. It was approved.
I've got a little work.
Yeah, we got a little work.
They working, you saying, right?
Yes.
It's nothing new.
Okay. The next one was the application Caitlin Fortheim, Fortsline.
Yes.
To, in the R two District, forty-six Corlins Street to reopen an adult, um, and keep the boarding house used.
So I put that in there on purpose. It really ended asking for the boarding house use, but I wanted to understand why. You know, it's kind of part of the process. You know, um, it's been vacant for six months or more, so because it's been vacant for that amount of time, you have to come back and basically ask for the, the use to be, but on the property since the sale. Again.
Okay, any, anybody have, have any questions of?
But it's a boarding house, it was.
So this property was, um, Cedarwood? Greenbrier?
A Greenbrier home for adults.
So it's a large, a large building with a lot of different rooms in it, so the, the variance that I'm asking for allows for that amount of people to live in one residence, um, to be zoned, I think it's variance for boarding home.
So that's only an issue? No, it's.
It's a, I think it's a variance.
No, it's not a variance. It wasn't an application for a variance.
A use.
So, Don, I don't mean to interrupt you, but, but there's about a site plan review that you guys will have to do before they open. But there is a question, uh, as to the ZBA, uh, they would need to apply for a use variance as well, because in the R two District, this is not an allowed use. So it's, it's, uh, kind of similar to the first application where you guys are gonna be considering as a whole, the site plan and the normal things you guys consider in the site plan review. But also, you know, uh, delegating to the ZBA, the question is to zoning.
Okay, so this, this will require a, a, a variance application also to the ZBA? Is that correct?
Yes, it would.
Okay. It did not indicate that any place in our.
I, from my understanding of Kevin, it's not either. He, he didn't say that it was, that I had to do that either.
He tried, he thinks you do and, and my guess. My guess has been that's how much you'd have to do.
Dante, is that because it was a discontinued use?
That is correct. Yeah, I had some conversations with Tanya about this as well, and she looked back in, into the water usage and uh, she thinks it's, it's been at least a couple of years since, since the use was allowed. Um, we were trying to pull up some historic records to see, you know, when the use variance was granted, but it's, it's been, uh, uh, at least, uh, uh, not used as that particular use for a couple of years, uh, um, from our understanding.
So besides the use, it, it looks like the the building doesn't, um, fit the requirements of setbacks. Is that something that I have to go, um, to zoning as well? This is, this is beyond the property line.
I haven't taken a look at the actual, you know, site plan, uh, as it were, so, uh, if there are setback requirements that they do not meet currently, then those variances would be needed as well. The bulk variances.
Then they're, they're not adding the, requesting to add in addition, this is an existing building that doesn't meet, um, like grandfathered in, I would think, that it, that, that they may not have to go to get a, the zoning board of appeals just for the setback requirements.
Well, if it's a new business starting up or a business that hasn't been there for a couple of years, then that would be a different case, though. Um.
Yeah, I'm always gonna ask them to tear down part of the building because it doesn't fit the requirements.
No, but it could be not an allowed use if it doesn't, you know, get a area variance. That would be a, a different sort of story. Um, in an R two District, you're not automatically granted a, uh, you know, a boarding house, it doesn't fit with the, the, the required zoning requirements, so.
Right, the use, yes. Well, okay. I'm just pointing out that it, it doesn't meet, the, the structure doesn't meet the requirements either. But I guess zoning can deal with that. But mainly that you're going to, before zoning, to make sure that the use again accepted them.
Dante? Dante?
Is that Kevin?
Yeah, Kevin here.
Hi, hi, Kevin. I can hear you.
Hey there. So my understanding of the zoning regulations, as I, uh, looked at them, and I'm not questioning your interpretation of it, but I thought with this having been a prior use and just laying vacated for a period of time only had to have another, uh, basically a conditional permit granted to be able to put it back into use for the same thing.
Well, uh, we didn't, we didn't really discuss that exactly, but I, from my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, they're, they're asking for, for not quite the same thing. Uh, a couple of, uh, uh, different, uh, um.
Well, the, the application came to me as to be utilizing it much the same as it was with Greenbri- Brier as a, a nursing home facility. That's how I was, uh, understanding the application.
What, what is the, then, what is the boarding house, uh, portion of it?
To be able to go to them. So Greenbrier was never a nursing home, it was an assisted living facility.
An adult home?
Yeah, it was an adult home. It's not.
Are you, are you planning to do the same as what Greenbrier did?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, why?
Well, not exactly the same stuff, but.
What, what, what is, what is different? I guess that's.
I'm just saying the way that they operated.
The, the plan, though, Caitlin, if I understand your application correctly, was to supply, uh, staff round the clock at the facility, the same as Greenbrier was.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So it's, it could be just a matter of semantics or terminology, Dante. She wants to do the same use as what there was before.
Same use.
Rings.
Exact same. Better run, but exact same.
I, I'm sorry, Dan, what was that?
No, that's, uh, the provider appears to be wanting to do better than perhaps what the, or
Ah.
owners did, and that, that's, that statement is kind of uh, getting bogged down. The use of what it was before is going to occur again.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, no more, no less. It will be the same.
So, so the issue is, is time lapse. Kevin, you, you, you think that since it's an exact same use, it doesn't matter how much time has passed since it wasn't used that way?
Yeah, there's, and I don't have the, the zoning book in front of me, uh, Dante, but it seemed like the place laid vacant after we went through with all of the major renovations that the prior owner did, and they brought everything up to speed uh, through, uh, building permit applications and such, passing, uh, all of their inspections and their fire safety inspection. Uh, they put an extensive amount of money into it to get it up, uh, in good shape. And I didn't think, I, I honestly, of course, time flies when you're having a ball, but I don't think it's been vacant for two years plus. I could be wrong. Um, but again, the reason that I had Caitlin apply for just a site plan review and a conditional permit was just to reopen the space for the same use.
Just checking back through my emails now, um, from, from Tanya, who was doing a little bit of, of research for me. The last real measured use was in July first, two thousand and twenty. All others were minimal usage. All others were minimal usage. She thinks it shut down somewhere around July first, two thousand and twenty.
In, in any case, what does the law say about? Having to reapply?
Well, I'd like to see what was actually granted, but if, if they lose their grandfather's status, then they would have to go back, you know, and, and get a.
Right.
A, a use variance, excuse me.
But I'm asking, how, when does one lose grandfather's status?
Well, it depends on what was granted in the first place, but in general, you know, a, a, a non-continued use. You know, losing the business license or starting a new business, you know, after a year. Your, your, your status is not grandfathered in.
I'm new to that, yeah.
I think there might have been a building permit issued in two thousand and nineteen, just going back over the notes and the conversations we had earlier in April.
Um, I'm sure there was a building, at least one building permit issued back around then, yeah. Because they, they basically emptied the place out, sent their residents. To an Auburn facility that they owned. Because I had more or less condemned certain portions of the. Facility after some complaints. And it was after that, once they emptied it and moved the residents out. They came in and did all the remodeling and stuff. I thought that they had come back in and repopulated it after that.
Would you like to look at the property file?
Dante, is there any, with this grandfather and the date being twenty twenty with, you know, in July? With COVID, is there anything that would? That would be like, hey, COVID was going to. Yeah, like what is the circumstance with that? It's not like you could be opening up a facility during COVID.
I mean, the ZBA was. And, and the planning board was meeting, but you're saying that no permits were being issued?
Well, it was, it's a facility for people. With medical issues. I don't think that. Okay, Caitlin, isn't Medicaid funded? You get Medicaid funding for it, so it's, it falls under the, the Department of Health. So a lot of things were shut down. Day half were shut down. Adult day facilities were shut down during COVID. So there may be some sort of. Something that falls under the public health emergency.
I, I guess the previous owners, what, why did they, they did all this work and then they didn't rehabilitate it or re-put people back in it?
Because things were shut down. Like the Department of Health wasn't allowing people to return to those settings if they were not open.
It's going to be that stop function, now, why weren't they open?
Well, they moved everybody out.
Yeah.
So they could, so they could remodel.
So after there was remodel, when?
Because places just, because COVID. So like, like adult day, adult day have many of these reopen or just reopen.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying. He did work, purchased the building, had to work it, that's what, that's what I'm trying to get at.
I'm almost positive, folks, that they did repopulate that building after I gave them their C of all.
It's been closed since I've lived in town.
You did give them a CO, Kevin?
I did issue a CO, correct, yeah.
It, it might be helpful to, you know, kind of go over a timeline of this, a more concrete timeline. What was actually done, because it sounds like, you know, we have some information, but we're kind of guessing at, at others. The last thing I asked, back, this was April eleventh. Was, you know, any other records they might have. About when the business started, when it ended. You know, if any variances were granted, a CO, anything like that. And I think she was looking into it, but from her records, it looks like this business stopped during June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. So if there's, if there were uses or, or you said it was populated, I think was the.
I, I believe, Dante, that they repopulated it after they got it fixed, and then it was shortly after that, that they. Ended up closing the doors. And I, I don't have the exact dates in front of me, so.
So that'll be helpful to, to, to know if there was a repopulation, you know, issued and when that was.
Dante, I have the. File folder here. Dan was kind enough to find it for us. And there is stuff going back here to nineteen seventy-seven. Building permit, John Francher, who. Started the. I believe started the Greenbrier. And, and it's, there's a lot of things in here. Architectural stuff from Christine Place in two thousand and nineteen, building permits. Isn't all acquaintance points, but. There's a lot of stuff that happened and is. Jessica has said, we, even if you wanted to. Reopen it in two thousand and twenty. After the work was done. That. New York State was. Shut down, you couldn't get anything done. So I, I think it's. Really unfair to penalize. This new owner. For New York State's failure. To get things done. People, the, the New York State was only, always use the. Argument that, well, we got people working from home, so they're, we're so far behind. In our. In our work. Well, that, that, that just. Really kills. All the small businesses. And, and it does nothing for the, the benefit of the public. It just makes it nice for the people that were out working from home, supposedly. But I see your certificate of occupancy, Kevin, was dated November fourteen, two thousand and nineteen. And. I don't know what, when the water usage dropped off to. Almost nothing, but. Once, once March of, March fourteenth. Of two thousand and twenty hit. There really wasn't a lot that anybody could do. And I think that's an exigent circumstance, quite frankly. And I, I think we could defend ourselves on that, but. But I'm not a lawyer. And I don't pretend to be. So you tell me what you think.
Are you talking to me, Don? I mean. Yes. I, um. Yeah, I would like to see when, 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 when the timeline was. You said a CO was issued in November. So that would be when it was repopulated temporarily, is that what you're saying?
It, it, it was eligible to be repopulated. I don't know when it was. You have, you said you have the. Water bill?
Yeah, Ta- Tanya's kind of best guess, just based on water usage. Again, this is just a, a, a guess. But July two thousand and nineteen was when it, it dropped off, is the phrase she used in the email. So that would have been three or four months prior to the CO being issued, which, which would make sense. You know, they had repairs over the next three. And then a certificate of occupancy was issued after the repairs were done. And then. Were. Were the applicants, the present applicants, the ones that were issued the CO?
No.
No. Okay, it was the prior business owners?
The prior.
Correct.
Yes. But the CEO is for an adult facility, yes, Kevin?
You're correct.
So that's all good. That takes us to November of two thousand and nineteen, which was. Three and a half years ago. I just don't know what happened in the throes three and a half years.
COVID.
COVID.
You know, within, within, within four months after that. Dante.
I, I'm, I'm aware that the, the pandemic happened. Were, were there people living in the facility in November, December, January, February, March, or it was completely empty? Then?
Memory serves me correct, which apparently hasn't been. They, when they did repopulate it, it was on a, it was by no means. Back to full capacity. Or pushing full capacity where they were when they emptied the building.
So some, some numbers of people moved in maybe that winter, November, December.
Correct, yes. Yeah, they did have some people. Yeah, because I'll, I'll be honest, Dante, I do remember Chief asking me later on in the season. Because I was aware of them bringing people back in there, and he wanted to know. What happened to the facility? I'm like, nothing, they got moved in. He goes, yeah, well, there's nobody there now, so. And I don't recall what month that was, so. They did bring some people back in. I don't know to what extent. And I honestly don't know when they ghosted the whole place, so.
The question about the stay and all of that, there, there was a stay put on a, a fair amount of things in March when the emergency declaration was made. There was a number of executive orders issued by the former governor and, and continued on for. A couple of years, or at least a year and a half. Whether those applied directly to this situation, I, I couldn't tell you. But that's why I'm trying to figure out the timeline, and we're kind of doing it. With, you know, fifty percent of one piece of information, eighty percent of a recollection, and a little bit of getting there. Without any concrete information, so.
But it appears the last official, what was a CO for an adult facility in November of nineteen? That's the last official action that Kevin took. Is that correct, Kevin?
Yeah, that sounds right, if that's the date. And I know that I did have some corresponding emails with. The state health department, because they're the ones, this. Facility did not involve county health department at all. It was directly through the state. And I had correspondence and some meetings there. On site with some people from state. Health, so. And they were pleased with the outcome of it, and basically coordinated with them for their final visits. To put it back into production, give them the C of all, so.
I don't see a problem with it the same use. Really.
Yeah, you, you seem to think that it's a continuous use of it. It was a lull there during the COVID period of time that wasn't repopulated because of that. And it's, it's not really any change of use to. Just a period of being on.
Still in an empty building. Things great.
And my, so the other thing I was explaining to Caitlin is that we would have to have a, a current updated. Fire and safety inspection done on it because the ba- place was vacated. Just to make sure everything is passing there, so I didn't. I wasn't thinking, Dante, that this had to go back to ZBA because it was laid dormant for. A certain period of time, so.
That, that's a factor i- i- in, in the law, you know, when a non-conforming use is created through a use variance. The abandonment of it, the non-use of it, does expire over a period of time, and that's the period of time I'm trying to figure out. I'm not saying this is, and these are, you know, bad business owners. I'm just saying that is what happens legally when, when a. A variance is granted for a non-conforming use. And, and, and it seems like it was abandoned for some period of time, but obviously there were some other things going on. And I'm just trying to make that determination on the fly with, with the.
So, if I can speak for a second, I'm bored inside of the building. It says April twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one. For their last meal listed on the board. And the previous staff member, manager, had told me that there were only two staff working and COVID hit the building. And that they had no more staff, and they did an emergency evacuation. And they sent them all to that same nursing home, Kevin. I don't, I think it was Auburn, he said.
Yep.
So that was my understanding from the previous manager. That is the date that is on the board.
What is that day again?
April twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one.
That's almost, that's just, oh, it's two years ago.
Almost to the day.
So this is, as I see it, Dante, is a legal question that only you can advise the village of doing. I mean, we, we, we're stuck here. We can't. Do anything without your advice. It really has to go to.
Yeah, I would appreciate that if, yeah, applicant could send me that information and anything she might have about that, and, and same with the village. But I'd, I'd love to see that file just to, to see the CO as well, but if you guys don't mind waiting another, uh, uh, till the next meeting next month. I might be happy to do some research on behalf of the applicant. To make that determination.
And we pursue the same plan review, of course? And that's only just, this is all dealing with the requirement to go to the PBA and all.
Yeah, I don't see why we can't, at least look at the site plan review and.
I mean, how can we speed this along? For our patients and the people who eat this. I mean, how can we make this? Situation better for, especially our patients. I'm sure that there's people who are depending on their services in our community.
So I think from the site plan review, we could prove it contingent upon Dante's.
Determination whether or not we, whether or not we need to go to.
You can do, you can do that, Dante, and what period of time can you come up with a verdict?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do some research and present it to the board. Again, I, I would like to see that CO that was issued and whatever applicant, whatever information the applicant had about the. The last dinner and, and moving people out. Which occurred in April, two thousand and twenty-one. What I want to look at is some of the executive orders that were issued right around the spring, two thousand and twenty date. Because they did create a, a, a declaration of emergency, which did provide for some stays. I'm not familiar with them. And I, I can't say that there was one on, on zoning, but. There could be, so that's the thing I'm, I'm going to look into as well. But the timeline will help, and I think it's a good idea if you guys do look at at least the site plan now, because then. The applicant won't have to come back, at least for that component. And if it does have to go to the ZBA, the ZBA, you know, I, I'll give them the same information.
This. Only relate to building forty-six or forty-four, one of them?
Only forty-six.
That's a neighbor there and they have a whole lot of backyard?
Yes. On the side.
And as, as nothing is changing. Your park is exactly the same way as it was before. These gravel driveways that yours were there, that's yours. On the right hand, on the.
I have one on the right hand, one on the side.
You still go to county, why does this not go to county?
Not within five hundred feet of this. State, county highway or. Anything else? Well. Then. I would like us to proceed with the site plan review. And get that taken care of. So this Fortsline can. Get one more item off her checklist. So. If I told you that. You know, your, your proposed action should be a. On the environmental assessment form. Meaning or exceeding state under your quarters, should be no, not yes.
Okay.
Because you're not going to be exceeding.
Sorry.
That's okay. Th- this, this stuff is. Yeah, no. It is, it is good or better than most. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion for the planning board to be lead agency for seeker on this. I'll entertain a motion for the planning board to be lead agency per seeker on this.
I will present the motion.
Okay, uh. We gotta do a. We gotta go through the list again.
Provision, sir. Provision, so this provision.
There's not gonna be a test on this, so, you know. Will the proposed action create material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? Will a proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Will a proposed action have an impact on the environment? No. See, for the critical environment. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect. Is existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkways? Will a proposed action cause an increase in use of energy? And it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Will a proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies? Will it affect public-private wastewater treatment? Will it impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? Will it result in an adverse change to natural resources? Will it result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? And will it for, action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Now, now, motion for a negative declaration, please. Excellent, Mike. Second. Ashley. A. Motion made in second, it all in favor? And. Now we would need a motion to approve the site plan as presented. Um, with. Maybe you could make a contingent. Upon. Final review by the attorney as to whether or not it needs to go to zoning.
I will make a motion to approve the site plan with contingency. Final approval by the. For very. I will second that.
Joan does this a lot faster than I do. All in favor? opposed? Period. Thank you. You'll be contacting. Kevin? You've stood with us, Kevin?
Yeah.
Do you think some of your reports? That you give the village board might. Have some information that would be. Valuable here?
I can certainly go back through uh, Don, but I think what, um. Yeah, I'm gonna probably start with the dates that. Caitlin had referred to regarding the meals served and stuff. Um, I wouldn't have had much activity beyond the uh, C of O. Um, so, uh, let me, let me just check my records and see what I can come up with.
Okay, that, that sounds good.
Would the state have dates? I mean, was this a state, would the state have? It's a state facility, right? So would they have dates of when, I mean, they must have record of when somebody left. I can reach out to this John Van Lake with the state and see maybe there's actual some, you know, legal whatever. And thank you very much for doing this for our great day. We appreciate it.
And. She's got her just here. We will proceed with the. Application, site plan review. Jagger and Cheryl Hubbard in the industrial zone at seven Cortland Street. Uh, site plan review to sell fresh and frozen fish. Uh, we've got the applicant in front of you. Mister guy, do you have any questions or any comments for us as to what you're doing?
Oh, this is what we do, we drive around to certain different places, mostly in Syracuse, Utica. In South Fresh, we pick it up on Wednesday, it gets overnighted from Boston. And we sell it Wednesday through Saturday morning, then we pick it back up again on Friday and Wednesday. I have a lot of people, friends. And stuff that I've been selling to here, instead of me chasing them around, I figured to be letting you just. Open up over there and anybody else in the village or anywhere else can come. By to. Very simple, there's nothing to do with the building, it's just. We pull into the yard, open door and. There's a menu and you tell it what you want.
Was like a good service to the village. You, you um, need a permit from the village, like a food truck?
Well, that's, that, that's all I really thought we needed to begin with, but I guess we need more, so you tell us.
That part you do need to, you know about.
I don't, I don't know.
And the village sounds like, I don't know, like, oh, they fill out an application, they say it's two hundred and fifty dollars for the year. I sent them a check, they sent me a thing.
Some of those, village, you own, would you do that too, or?
We, we, we don't have that here. Yeah, that's what we need to know.
We have solicitor's permits, but uh, Kevin wanted us to go in front of playing, just in case, let's take a look at the particulars, let's see. Well, again, and again. You may not need a permit. If they own the property. I mean, what can, uh, 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 permit to sell, but. You know, if, if they were, if they were coming in and parking on a street or on somebody else's property, that's where.
And this is another, this is another question I was gonna bring up. If down the road, we decided that, that instead of my. My building, we wanted to park it, say in the, the Elks Club parking lot or behind the fire station. What would that entail?
That's one of the solicitors' permits, like.
That's when you would have to get a solicitor. I believe a solicitor.
And as long as it all works good here, then I have no reason to go anywhere else, but. But I wanted to ask that question.
This is a change of use. I mean, that's not what they're doing there now, and now they're opening a new, another business on that site. I mean, I don't see any, any problem with it, but that's why it's before us.
But it's a truck, what are they?
And the, and the business has been running for, she bought it from her stepfather.
I mean, he ran it for seventeen years, I ran it for three.
The fish, the fish park?
Yeah.
You still have the, the roofing business.
Yeah.
But now I'm only doing like repair work a couple of days.
It's an ancillary business to the, the priming business. So it's, it's, it's not really.
The gutter roofing is still going to be safe.
It's not, it's not a change of use, it's just an.
Right, pretty much, and open in the back door.
I don't think it's prohibited in a, an industrial zone.
I don't think the location of the truck is of any issue to us in the site plan.
No, I, I think you're gonna, you're gonna pull it into the, into the driveway.
It's from four thirty to six, it's an hour and a half.
Like putting any vehicle in there, you know. Plan those and tell us where you, you took, it's in a ride, then a.
Thursday, oh, Thursday, tomorrow, yeah.
But you plan on having some kind of a, a sign out front during when you're open or anything, you know.
No, just an open flag that'd be hanging on the back of the truck, no, no signage. The sign, signage is on the side of the trucks, it says John Seat.
I was just thinking that a company was looking for you in Boston. A sandwich board, sign on the front, say, oh, here now.
A lot of visits tomorrow, maybe.
Well, oh, we don't know, okay. I'm gonna make it a plan.
I think the board may have interested in just traffic flow. Parking, number cars, things like that.
Yeah.
The ins and outs.
Yeah, things of that nature.
And.
But it's usually pretty quick, I mean, there's a, there's this truck in the, it's a parking lot, yeah, and it goes quick.
Good customers to park in the lot there?
In the lot.
So, so how many cars?
The time, how big they are, I mean, I would say. Two, maybe three at a time.
And how big is a lot? It's a lot big enough to accommodate two?
The whole front, yeah, they have the whole front of the building.
Yeah, there, there's room that if you want, you could have them come in and pull it out and, you know, and move. Out to the south side of the building.
You're in the village, you can just walk right there, you don't.
Yeah, right.
Look around the corner. And getting out looks like all along.
I bet.
Well, you're seeing four thirty to six to your.
On Thursday, from the beginning of April till Christmas. My customers, you're gonna wanna buy a whole bunch and put it in a freezer.
Okay, this. Okay, we need to move, this is a type-two action. Lucky we got type-two everything, um.
Want somebody else to read it, or do you have to read it?
Well, I, I need a motion.
Don, I uh, hate to be the interrupter, um. I, I think I noticed this last time, I forgot to say something, so I believe this is an unlisted action. A type-two action wouldn't require you to go through the short form. A type-two action would be like a, a zoning variance or a, a, a small building project on a residential land. The unlisted action is the vast majority of actions that require a short form.
Okay, it's unlisted, all right.
Sorry, just for the record, and if you don't, yeah, thanks.
Unlisted, all right. So do we have, we still have to be lead agency? Ashley. Okay.
Oh, you want me to read?
Yeah, we gotta vote, all right, all in favor? Yes. Okay.
Will the proposed action create ma- a material conflict with an adopted land use? Plan or zoning regulations? Will the proposed action result in a change in the use and the intent or the intensity of the use of the land? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics caused? By the C, the CEA? Will the proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic, traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit? Biking or walkway? Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy if it fails to incorporate reasonably? Available engine, energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Will the proposed action impact public or private water? Public or private wastewater treatment? Will the proposed action impair? The character or quality of the important historic? I, you know, you know, thank you, archaeological. This is very tongue twister. Okay.
You, you thought I was just being stupid, right?
No, I'm just like, my goodness, I'm sick of reading this, so no. No?
No.
Okay, number nine. Will the proposed action result in an, in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water, bodies, groundwater? Will the proposed action result in an increase to the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage? And will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Look at it like a fish.
I'll entertain a motion for a negative declaration, will, Mike?
I'll second it.
Ashley, all in favor?
While we're on this, I believe. We learned that the number four there, we don't have to read because we don't have a C of E.
Yeah. You're right.
That's good, that's one last thing. And a tongue twister, we never have to read that again.
It was obviously written by lawyers. Sorry Dante.
That's okay, Don.
Okay, uh, back plan on the agenda. Is. Uh, minutes of the. Meeting. Oh, yeah, where is it? November sixteen, twenty twenty-two.
That was the discussion of the LED sign.
Kevin, so I had a question, do you have, now do you have to apply for a solicitor's permit? Or because we have.
No. So to back up a half step, Don, I don't think you did an approval of the site plan review.
Okay, all right. Sorry about that, I.
And with regards to the question on the solicitor's permit. My understanding of the village's definition for a solicitor's permit is different than some of my other municipalities. And so the reason that this went before a site plan review. Was to be as an approved use with a site plan review in the industrial district. Which does not require having a solicitor's permit. Because the village is set up such that solicitor permits. Are meant and designed to go door to door.
Okay, so like if he wanted to move to the Elks Club, he wouldn't need one. Because.
He would not need one, but it may require another site plan review the way the ro- the laws are written. So this is not your approval for the um. For the site planner view acceptance. Gives them the allowance to be able to set up and stage there from now till whenever, right there at that site. And like I say, because our solicitor permits are different than other municipalities. If they wanted to move over to the Elks, they would probably have to go through the process again. Correct Dante, or not?
So I think they would be a peddler, but uh, sa- same situation, so both the solicitor and peddlers. Are the beginning starts to go from home to home, from store to store, from place to place, or from street to street. The only difference between the peddler and the solicitor is the peddler has the goods available immediately. And the solicitor would take orders for merchandise to deliver in the future, so it sounds like the fish would be. Ready for pickup immediately, uh, from what the applicant said. But uh, they're in a fixed location, uh, 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 in that specific address.
Correct.
They're not anybody that. Uh, need a peddler or solicitor's permit for that location because they own location already.
Yep.
It'd be akin to opening up a new business at the location, sort of, uh.
Correct.
Is, is what we um, came down with that.
Yep.
We, we did not, I did not have a vote on the pool of site plan. Uh, in a motion to approve the site plan?
I'll second.
Ashley?
Or, oh, somebody. It can be either one, we don't care.
Okay. All in favor?
There you go.
Carrie, now you know.
One question, um, and I think this is pointed towards Kevin. With ours, with us being approved. Do, can, do we have to put a sign out, or is it something? A sign in front of the house or anything like that? Illegal or?
So this is the, this is the.
If you wanna do a sign, uh, if it's Mark I'm speaking to, that would be done on a separate permit. But basically, my understanding is this gives you guys permission to do this from now till eternity. So, um, you guys figure out your signage at this point. And, uh, if you wanna do that as a, as a permanent sign, then we'll go through those details together.
And Kevin, that was, that was, uh, Mr. Lilly. It was about the, for the salon.
Oh, for the salon, I'm sorry.
R two, my recollection is you can have a maximum of one square foot or two square foot signage in an R two.
Yeah, it's whatever the sign district, uh, the R two district has in, in the law for signs. I don't have that in front of me. So they're allowed, uh, they would have to apply for the sign permit, but, um, without going to ZBA, if they stay within the, uh, recommended amount of signage size for that district, we can just do it with a simple permit. They don't have to come back to a board.
Okay, should be two, two, eight, two, one. I mean, should be two, two, eight, two, one, marking sign. Uh, let's see.
Yeah, right.
I've been looking at it a few times. Sure, size, yeah. Yeah, maybe not, yeah, I think so. One sign per lot, home occupation, one sign per lot, not exceeding two square feet in area. Must be stationary, not self-illuminated, and announce only the name and occupation of the building tenant. No flashing in the yard. No standing. No, no.
No, only, you know, TV screen, no flashing, no.
Do I have to apply for, for me to do that? Yes, we can. Okay, all right.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Y'all have worked.
Thank you. And entertain a motion to adjourn?
No, 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 no. Well, I thought I did this. Motion every, who's the minutes here of the number twenty-two, twenty-two.
I will second that motion.
Yeah, I could say I heard it, but.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Here we go. Motion adjourned?
My motion.
Ashley, Ashley, Ashley's on her way to her honeymoon, so she's motioning. We gotta get her on a flight.
Have a great time.
Thank you.